Could you go to the microphone, dear?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As you know for the record, I'm Chris Ford. My contract only called for a five-minute appearance, so we will have to do some negotiations. Okay. With my serious head on and your comments on Phil Royal's untimely demise, the point that really touches me is the fact that, you know, he has a wife of one year and a child of two months.
Yeah.
And, you know, she's got an entire lifetime to go through. I think that's what I'm studying. Right, let's get on to some other, let's say, heavy stuff. Tomorrow begins the supervisor elections pushing out the, what do you call it, mail-in ballots. Starts tomorrow, yeah? And of course goes through until the primary on August the 30th. So my purpose in coming here today was just to prod you and remind you and try and motivate you to do whatever we can to get just a few more votes to support the absentee service debates because I've been involved in a lot of political campaigns and I can tell you that losing isn't fun. But much worse than that is when you lose by about 20 votes. And you say to yourself, you know, if I had pushed a bit harder, got a few more of my friends, did a bit more of this and a bit more of that, we would have pulled this off. So please don't let us lose by 20 votes. Deadly serious. I was sitting outside, I made a few more notes. If you have not kept me waiting, see, I finished by now. I assume, Sean, I assume the purpose of your attorney-client session was to decide whether to pursue Jimmy T. for defamation. I thought that Samuel's last comment on the political story was very good, like, you know, where's this guy coming from or something? I didn't find Jimmy's allegations to be humorous in any way, shape, or form, and I think for a guy who's, and I say this publicly and deliberately, you know, for a guy who's running for a county commissioner's seat where he has no basic oversight over the school district, I really, I don't understand where that's coming from. Next. Oh, yes. The investigation into the allegations, I phoned yesterday and I asked somebody, I passed in a message, I might have on the other guys, I think we did real good to put that bed real quick. So, ladies and gentlemen, that is it. It's off. Public, are you ready for me? Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
My favorite dress.
Thanks for your support. Okay, yes, we have the primary school operations. And Mr. Mullins wants to deal with that.
Ms. Stanley?
Yes, sir.
Carl Perkins?
Yes. Would you like me to come speak about it? Yes, sir.
I move approval, approve the date change for Carl Perkins' secondary and post-secondary funding.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve the date change for Carl Perkins' secondary and post-secondary funding. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose. Here is three zero. Thank you. Next, we have the purchase of Dell computers for LaCanto High School.
Approve the purchase of Dell computers for LaCanto High School, then?
I second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve the purchase of computers for LaCanto High School's computer labs.
I do have a question. Just so that I understand, now, this was in addition to our other approval on the computers, is that right, Mr. Mullins?
This is paid for with paper.
Right. Okay, so these can't be used outside of this program, so?
Yes, sir.
They're specific to that purpose.
I would say you could use them to test the resources, but that's not what they're going to do.
Ms. Stanley, those funds to do that are generated from the certification bonuses that the school says, I don't think they're called bonuses, they're like, or are they bonuses that we get when certifications, when students are successful?
There's a number of students that pass through this certification.
Yes.
And then we get a funding and then that's what we use to fund these, to go back into the program, the ideas that keep circling.
We use that same money.
Is there done with you? No. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose. Here is three zero. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kirby.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Questions?
Yes, I've got a question. So this is the open contract that we approved in the last meeting, is that right, Mr. Bradshaw? The one on Jessica Harris' interpreting?
No.
This is the one from?
This is a contract that we entered with Jessica Harris to provide.
Your interpreting services?
Yes, we have, our resident, our board president, the contractor, coming, the contractor. The contract we approved last time is the primary.
Okay, so this contract that we have before us is in a form that is similar to the next contract on the agenda, but yet there are some differences as far as the payment, I believe.
Sometimes the payment is worked out differently from how.
Yeah, one is 55, I think, one is 58, and that's just what they negotiated?
That's what they negotiated, yes, sir.
Okay. But this contract that looks kind of the same is basically a format that you use in your?
It is the same format that we use, and the reason why there's not a specific amount, for example, on Jessica Harris, it's on an as-needed basis. We need to allocate to have funding available if we run into an emergency. Our day-to-day operations are covered by the people we already have, but if they can't provide interpreting services for, you know, a particular IEP meeting or for any after-school activities, or whatever the case might be, we do have to depend on an outside agency to come in and provide those interpreted services for us.
Okay.
So that's why there's not a specific amount that we are definitely going to be using. We allocate funds through our budgets and then?
Okay. So Exhibit B that is no longer there, I know that wasn't on either of the contracts, so Exhibit B was basically, it wasn't a 30-day receipt payment, is that probably why that got cut?
That was the one, yes.
So, but, Mr. Bradshaw, these contracts now is similar to the nursing one, I mean, regardless, this is sign language interpretation, correct? So are we going to see this happen on nursing? Is that a possibility, they may try to change those contract agreements, or? You follow what I'm saying? I mean, this isn't, these are coming before the board individually, but yet on the nurses, we approved?
Reperform the contract. I believe that if we enter into a contract, it's simple, a person can hold the contract back, and I would have re-approved like that, so we can use nurses from the university.
Right.
And then, you know, what they would do is enlist the nurses that they have, you know, in the C and D, you know, to make sure.
Right, where the sign language interpreters are not, that is primarily an issue with that, we have it for nurses, right?
And they're all back, and everyone still has to be back with us.
Right. Okay, I make a motion, we approve the amended contract for sign language interpreters with Jessica Harris interpreting services.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the amended contract for sign language interpreters with Jessica Harris interpreting services.
Right. Just have one question. And Ms. Kirby, or you, or Ms. Alagretta, or somebody may be able to answer. I know, and for the public to understand, there's nothing against Jessica Harris, my question, I know she helps us with trying to fill in our needs. We, I know, we're trying to change the structure of some of our interpreters so that we can maximize having people internally, I believe, or to, basically, to not have to go outside as often to fill some of those needs.
And we did change the job description?
That's what I was saying.
And the rates of pay. As of yet, we've not been successful in finding a new interpreter. It's interesting, they've had one post at LaCanto Middle School for quite some time, and they keep on giving bilingual interpreters that want to come forward for jobs, so we need ASL interpreters. So, so far, it's not gotten out there, but our people are just now getting ready to come back, and so perhaps their networking is going to be our best avenue to find new interpreters.
So, so the reason we're having to do this is, again, we haven't been able to fulfill a permanent position, we have to be able to provide the service to the students, and so that's it.
Even if we had and our position was full, we still probably need to have Jessica Harris?
Absolutely. It's just, and that's what I wanted to understand, so my question wasn't against Jessica, it just was trying to understand, we have been doing to try and make that more successful. And then my only thing, too, is that we've talked about some of these, whether they get charged, we're all worried about every dollar we're counting, so some of this, we're trying to, I believe, charge Medicare and do some other things to recoup some costs. I brought up, too, whether we have a charter school or someone else that we've been providing interpreters to, are we making sure that we need to charge them for the interpreter services, is that being done? And that's, I'm just saying more of, I think we need to be aware of that.
And I would agree. For many of our services, we have already had in place for years the Medicaid bill, and one of the things, an initiative that we have is to reemphasize that, refocus, we've been working closely with both Mrs. Alagretta, Ms. Carnavale, and their department, as well as finance with Polishman, to make sure, it's hard to bring me up to speed on that issue, so that we can make sure that all of our people are on the right page and moving forward. We know it's critical.
And I think Ms. Wilson's department has structured in such a way to maximize having some people looking at that and processing those for that very purpose, so we're trying to capture, I think, those dollars back as best we can, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I think it's going to be a continual improvement, is what I would believe, as we understand it and as our people understand the process, I think that we'll monitor it and we'll get to it in a week.
And in case there's any question, I'm grateful we're providing these services, and essential that we make sure our students have these services, we just have, we're trying to balance how those get funded and we balance making sure that we're being good stewards of all of them. So that was my question, purposes of my question.
Yes. I had two questions, you mentioned about the charter school, so the charter school needs a sign language interpreter at the school, how is that paid?
Um, to face this percentage, do we have a sign, is it here we go?
What is it, sir?
Have we been doing that with everyone, because, or is that something where?
We haven't, we haven't done it. Out there, this is our first year, or 15, 16, this is the first year with ESE students at A B S, and our first year with my folks, who do both.
Because I know, I know we had one that's been there, and so that was why I was questioning. And again, we're grateful that they're out there providing those services, we just want to make sure that this can happen.
And let me ask about the time of sign language, you said American sign language, is this one that you use? Yes, ma'am. What is the other, the name is something like, there are two? Yes, there are, and I'm not sure, but the American sign language is the one that's more sophisticated. Thank you. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Here is three zero, oh, I should say, that's 30 days, not 30 days, zero, but here is three zero, thank you. Yes, we have Sheldon Speech Therapy Services.
Move approval, to approve contract for Sheldon Speech Therapy Services LLC.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd, to approve the contract for Sheldon Speech Therapy Services LLC. I have a couple of questions on this, if I can. Oh, this is one question on the 7.01, this is a language question, it said, any notices to be given under the contract by either party to the other may be affected either by personal delivery. Now, is that a law term, I think, that way? Yes, I thought it was, because it was odd, and I figured it was probably a law.
No disrespect with that.
Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose. Here is three zero. Now we have voluntary pre-kindergarten education, and that's where I have a couple of questions.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve VPK 2016-17 provider agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the VPK 2016-17 provider agreement. I want to ask a question on the back of the first page, second page, about transportation funding, and how is the transportation paid for? I didn't understand that. It said the student enrollment of the program may not be reported under service statute for student transportation funds, but then how is the transportation paid for?
I don't know the answer right off the top of my head, but it seems like if they're, we're not billing them for it, we're paying for it out of our fund balance, out of our transportation budget.
Okay. And next question about the age of the students, now, what is the age span? VPK is for students who are four and five, although there was a legislation that was passed, a statute that was passed this year, that if a parent has not availed themselves of their VPK allowance or monies, that they may choose, if their, if the birthday, I believe, is between February and September, to keep that child out of kindergarten and keep them in VPK for a year. Not necessarily in one of our school VPK programs, but in a VPK program. So that may help some of our late bloomers, that rather than them entering the school as young July 31st babies, a parent could possibly choose to enter them a year later. So that was one thing that was changed. So the ages now could be as old as six. But Kennedy, young even four. Not for VPK, for ESE, pre-K, it certainly can be, but not for VPK. What would the ESE go down to age? Age three is when we start in our schools. Prior to that, they would, had started, in years past, we had had zero to three babies, but right now we do not. And the requirements, the child attending, the program, you're talking about? Well, they, each of our schools does a screening, and I will just back up and say, I believe the only requirement is that the child is of that age and has not received those, that allowance or those monies. Whether or not we accept them in our schools is, depends on the screening process, because what we're trying to identify are those students that are the most needy academically, and make sure that we're providing, you know, we have the qualified teachers to help give them the best start that we can. I remember the discussion, you know, about another group that was like 20%. Yeah, 20% of those 18s, so as many as, basically, three children could be not falling into the lowest screening process. In this program as well as? Yes, ma'am. Okay.
But we had pretty much said that that was if there was availability, that wasn't that correct, I mean, if there was availability positions, or is that still?
I would say because of when they identify those students for pre-K, there's availability in June, when they're setting those classes up, but I can tell you that we have a school already has 20 students on the waitlist. So, and they were one of the schools that added a third VPK unit, so there's definitely some need out there. I have a question on page three here, I'm getting word questions, so the VPK class, so that parents are not constructively required to enroll students in some of those services, and I don't know what constructively means there.
What number?
It's on the age three, number 15, third, fourth line, who would bother, last word before the line. Provider agrees to schedule all VPK hours offered for any VPK class so that parents are not constructively required. I'm thinking that that probably would refer perhaps to a private provider more than hours, because when their examples are extended day, extended year, wraparound or full-day services, so perhaps if they were going to a private provider, the VPK portion of their day is just so many hours, and then saying that they don't have to keep them there to six o'clock and the parent pay the difference, is what I am guessing. Okay, because I was wondering how figured out other schools is where parents find the difference and stuff. And there's no way that it would? Oh, because they don't charge. Oh, wrong. There's a question, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, and I don't want you to have to go through this part of it too much, again, because we did have good, great discussion, as Mr. Dodd said, about the percentage that we accept, and as you said, we're trying to focus as best we can to the needs first of students. I thought we were hopeful, if we could, to expand some of the program, if there was an availability, just to provide more service to the community, but I don't know if, you know, where that's at.
And we did, we had three classes this year, we added a class at Inverness Primary School, Central Ridge Elementary School, and Rock crushon Elementary School. So Inverness Primary School has three pre-K classes.
So same thing, we're trying to capture as much as we can, I'm assuming, is it no different as far as trying to find teachers, it's like everywhere else in the state, or that it's just as challenging to find pre-Ks as to find geometries, it is, I mean, I understand sometimes there's more, but I mean, that's a challenge that we all face.
There is pre-K certification that they do have to have in order to be an instructional teacher with us. I have not heard from any principals that they've struggled with that, mostly when we approached, we approached every elementary school and asked them, do you have room? And those three schools had room for another class, and like I said, they've been able to fill the classes and get the teachers for that. So I don't think that the certification is as specific as geometry would be, and it's quite as much of a hard to fill area as that would be.
I think we are a little different, too, that, one, it's a full-time school for the school year, as opposed to, I think, private voluntary pre-Ks that have this, it's a more limited period of time than a full year, and we do have certified teachers that are doing that, and I believe that's different than the general community, that they may just have, you know, a school where they hire somebody to teach, but it doesn't necessarily have to be certified.
Correct. I believe it's a CDA that they have to have in the private sector, but for ours, we have instructional teachers.
And again, that's where we are trying to make sure we hit certain needs and requirements. So I just want, I want to make sure I understood that, and I also want to show that.
Thank you. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose. Here is three zero. Thank you.
And Ms. Kirby, was this your first time up here as director to this? I can't remember.
I think it is.
Well, congratulations.
Great to be here.
Glad to be here.
And I know, and your board members, you would like to say, big thank you to the ESE department for all that y'all do.
Absolutely.
We have a great team, and just keep supporting our kids, moving them forward. Thank you. Next, we have Citrus County Health Services Program, um, the South program. Good afternoon. It's a contract that comes before you on a yearly basis. We have received wonderfully a little bit more money this year to help support the program. I have a question, because I asked for the job description, I don't really know what the job description is, but it's, this is the same thing, it's not a different program? We don't have parent facilit, well, I'm going to parent facilitators. Okay, it's coming up, so I'll save my question for that.
Want me to go ahead and make a motion?
Yes.
Move that we approve the Citrus County Health Services Program, Services Program Contract.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd, to approve the Citrus County Health Services Program contract with 2016-17.
All right, I do have a question.
Yes.
In regards to the amount, I know we've had some discussion in the past about the need for these services, so how much was the increase? Do you know?
Yes, $40,000.
Okay. And with that, it does mention in here the parent facilitators, but yet we're going to be, we're going to prove hiring the parent facilitator later on the agenda, so that is the, that's the position that's funded through this money?
This money helps fund an RN, it also funds two, currently, two parent facilitators. The contract with the Health Department has always provided us with two parent facilitators, just in the last probably four years, they've raised the amount of money to provide us with another RN. Knowing that the screenings, both mass screenings and dental ceilings take an enormous amount of time, they asked what other services could they provide? They were going to bring somebody in on their end part-time, I shared with them it would be much easier for us if they would give us the money, and we hired somebody in a term capacity to provide those services. This way I could utilize that person in other ways as well.
Great. So that's how we're going to get another parent facilitator, too?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, that's great.
I have now got a question, I'll shove it in the commission, but parent facilitators that we've had always, their job is what, the description of their job there, it's to do what? The main focus through the Health Department's provision is, and I will quote, that they assist the nurses in meeting the state mandated health screenings. Many of the other things they do with those health screenings are provide services to families in need. If a family has a situation with lice problems, and they're recurring lice problems, they'll go out to the home with the nurse, share the product with the family, actually instruct the family parent or the guardian how to eradicate the nits and the lice, and work with that family to get those students or student back to school. It also, they also make home visits to provide clothing, some other items for the students, toothbrushes, hygiene material, they also work very closely with our McKinney-Vento families to provide support as well, but 85, 90% of their job is involved with the mass screenings, the documentation, the paperwork, the rescreenings, and supporting the nurses through that. It's a full-time job from August to the end of March. Okay, I know, very familiar with the services, you know, that, supporting McKinney-Vento and all of that, and I didn't realize 85% is on the medical side. Yes, ma'am.
The only question I had to, is that, is this, is through this contract, too, that the Health Department is coordinated also, that, for example, at the high school level with, I'm trying to think of the name of the course, the health course, I wanted to say the health and wellness course, where, when it comes to whether it's student sexuality or other information, that this is where we would refer them to the Health Department?
Absolutely, but that's not part of the monetary value of this contract. They provide those services through their Health Department and their nurses. We refer students who have questions about their sexual activity and STDs, if you will, to the Health Department, and they provide that support. Something they want to look into this year is providing information right in the health class to the students at that time, brain health.
I think that's a conversation superintendent, staff, you all, and the Health Department are working through?
Yes.
To do that, which I think is a great, great way and direction to start that, that conversation.
We might say kudos, we're giving the money from the Health Department, $100,000, we don't have to pay it out of our budget, we're always looking for ways to reduce the budget, are we not, Ms. Wilson? So, good job, good job.
We're using the taxpayers' money more efficiently as well, because we're using that within the school system, and we're not duplicating services, and I think we can do that more efficiently.
Good job. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose. Here is three zero. Next, we have the petty cash dispersals, food services, and I think Mr. Costello's supposed to?
He always comes with money. Mr. Costello's great, he just, you know, we go. Mr. Preston's great, he just kind of, we go through his pockets. I, uh, move to approve petty cash dispersments to assign food service personnel for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve petty cash dispersments to assign food services personnel, excuse me, for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. Any further discussion or any discussion?
Just Preston, how much money did, uh, our general budget have to offset the cost of your department this year?
Uh, hopefully none, and the answer is none, yes.
That was all I had.
I tell you, Regina, Stomi, good job, guys.
When is the, um, um, you're still providing meals at school right now on the, on the?
Yes, sir, summer feeding.
Summer feeding, when, when does that?
That will end, uh, the twenty-ninth, this week, on Friday. Gives us adequate time for our custodians to get everything cleaned up and then we gear up for the start of the school. We'll get our first deliveries, uh, August the third, start preparing.
Uh, where's the money come from to fund that?
Uh, we're a federal program, so we get it from USDA. That's majority of our funding. We can get some state funding, residents, local for sales and such.
And that's a good question, so roughly, and I'm not holding you to the penny, but roughly, how much, is it excess fund, um, revenue? It's not revenue, it's, uh, over?
Excess funds.
Excess funds, I want to make sure I use that. About how much excess funds was in last year's school?
In last year, I'd have to, uh, defer to Ms. Wilson on that. We're still working on the AFR, but I would say we have a healthy fund balance to continue to operate and do what we can and help out the district as well.
I had someone asking about the program and they were opposed to it, saying we shouldn't spend money on breakfast. And, uh, that's why I asked, where did the money come from? I guess they thought we're taking out textbooks or something. I'm, but I'm glad to see that it's a federal program that they sent to us. And, and the purpose of it is, is to feed the children, it's not, uh, something.
It's the Department of Agriculture, actually, that is working with that to, to fund our kids and.
Longly appreciated program since nineteen forty-six, National School Lunch, your breakfast came in the sixties. So it's been successful for many, many years.
That's good to know, those days, I didn't know in the sixties, seventies.
Breakfast came after the national school lunch in nineteen forty-six to help out with the military. We had people reporting for military service that were malnourished, but it was passed.
We appreciate you selling the non-fried french fries and the baked pizzas, because it is that excess revenue that is paying for other services, our custodians during lunchtime, our aides during lunchtime, renovations in the kitchen. And I know these are appropriate purchases that have to be qualified. They directly mean that they don't have to come out of the general fund or have a war taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
A good point, Mr. Kennedy, thank you for making that.
And we just need to do, I think we.
Olive Baker, Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose, carries three zero, thank you. Goldenrod next?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Good afternoon, I am here to ask approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod.
Somebody's been busy hiring.
Yes, we have.
And I see some people that are on the list that are moving from being aides to teachers.
That is correct.
It's exciting to see.
I was talking with a group the other night and I was thinking, I, I always take classes, my whole life, I'm doing that. And then imagine that, but it's exciting, you know, to go from one position to another. You have to take all these courses, you learn so much, it's, it's a really good thing, I like it.
I saw one of them on social media, they said, they, they said goodbye to all of their people in their current role. And then they teased and said, only turn around at the same school and just move everything into a classroom as a teacher.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in our bulletin.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve the instructional and support recommendations as presented in the Goldenrod. Further discussion? Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose, carries three zero, thank you.
I also want to share with you, before we move on to the second item, that at this time, as far as positions that are posted at the elementary level, we have thirteen instructional positions and ten support positions. At the middle school level, we have seven instructional units and four support positions posted. At the high school, we have five instructional positions and two support positions. At, at the, our other schools, we have one instructional position and nine support positions posted.
How many, uh, instructional high schools?
That is correct.
How many instructional?
Five. We are working at this time with the schools to make sure that we process our instructional personnel first, our support, and then our long-term substitutes. We are working with the schools diligently to make sure that those long-term substitutes are in place. And the majority of our long-term substitutes are working towards certification. So we are diligently working with them to make sure they take those tests and are able to move from a long-term sub-position into an instructional position.
Tomorrow's, um, new, new teacher orientation, about how many teacher?
We will have between, I believe we're around seventy-five at this point that have cleared and will be at new teacher orientation. And we look forward to seeing you tomorrow morning.
Yes. Sounds exciting too, is that a single new teacher?
That's breakfast tomorrow, you go seven thirty?
Yes, breakfast at seven thirty and then we will begin our presentation at eight o'clock. So we look forward.
Do want to comment on the hour, but I guess that's not going to change.
No. Next on the agenda is to ask approval.
I don't think we have, we approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, we did. Yeah, we did. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, pose, carries three zero, thank you.
Next on the agenda is to seek approval for Marissa Applegate to be named Assistant Principal at La Canto Middle School effective July twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
Um, I move that we, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Marissa Applegate, Assistant Principal of La Canto High School effective July twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to accept the appointment of Marissa Applegate, Assistant Principal of La Canto Middle School effective July the twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose, carries three zero, thank you.
Next on the agenda is to ask approval for one additional parent facilitator position.
I'll make the motion that we approve the hiring of one additional parent facilitator.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve the hiring of one additional parent facilitator.
And again, I think we need to make sure that it's been indicated by the Citrus County Health Services Program Contract that we just approved that this money was being provided, uh, through the Health Department, uh, for a funding of a much-needed position.
All right, you're right, thank you. Olive Baker?
Aye.
Pose, carries three zero, thank you.
Have a good evening and I will see you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw? Uh, if, and, uh, this, uh, Madam Chair, if I could just ask a question about tomorrow's meeting since we're on that topic?
Sure.
So when we are going to meet with the new teachers in this orientation, obviously, we are not limited in what we can say to them as a board, right? Or as far as, um, instructing them or as far as talking about the issues in the county, these are new employees. If, if I talk about, uh, the need for absent sales tax, I'm not, uh, I just want to make sure.
Good question.
Shall we pencil the end for a five or ten minutes?
Well.
I'll go ask Mr. Bradshaw to take my first of one pen.
You mean a half a pen.
Hey, I'm a little, it's an open.
I'm confused.
Mr. Bradshaw, any other matters you wish to bring up?
No.
Mr. Mullin? Mr. Kennedy?
Well, first I want to thank, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Ms. Powers, uh, for attending the Lead a Woman Voters Forum, um, this last week and sharing about the half penny sales tax referendum and answering questions and, and doing that. You did an outstanding job, so thank you. Um, I also want to thank the Honorable Doug Dodd for going on WYKE and talking about the referendum and then also talking about other school, the other things happening in the school system. For anyone who's wanting to catch that, you can go on Facebook and, and get the replay of it. But we really do appreciate you doing that, that, that really helps us. I, I want to take a minute and just thank Superintendent Hamel. We had, we had a member of the, uh, public earlier talk about, um, an investigation that we had to do and it's been made public and it's been reported. But I want to also publicly thank Superintendent Hamel, Assistant Superintendent Mullin, Executive Director Johnny Bishop, for their handling of these serious accusations, um, for immediately taking action to address them. These involved accusations regarding student safety and ethics. And I believe that, uh, I'm grateful that, and not surprised that the accusations were unfounded. And I am amazed that, uh, always the work that goes into those reports, a hundred and nineteen pages. And, um, I believe we were all provided copies of that, uh, so that we could read through it. It was very detailed, so, um, I also wanted to thank Steve for his work in, in doing that. I know he kind of gets sequestered and, and gets to work on that, but it was very detailed. I just am wondering if someone can tell us, you know, we, we had to take some, a situation that involved multiple accusations. And particularly in, in the manner in which they were received, it forced us to, to take such a formal action. And it doesn't come without a cost. And it's a cost to our district, a cost to the taxpayers to have had to have done that. Do we have any idea what it costs for us to do that? I don't know, Ms. Hamel or Mr. Mullin or Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir, I can give you some real numbers on that. Before I do, I would like to say, uh, I appreciate you recognizing the staff, as you recognize this is a very busy time of year for us. As we get ready for a new school year, um, what we do, those allegations are very, very serious. We started talking about this, if students were going to be very responsive to that. Um, the investigation did, uh, conclude with a hundred and nineteen-page summary of findings and artifacts of those findings. The investigation did involve fourteen administrators, five support staff members, um, which totaled about seventy-seven hours' worth of manpower to complete the investigation in such a, um, responsive manner. We felt that we needed to do that, especially at the time it's, we had to start. So that, that in and of itself, um, correlates to about just under twenty-nine hundred dollars' worth of manpower and hours.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Kennedy.
I wanted to, uh, thank the board and Mr. Kennedy for opening here today. We had a chance to recognize and honor Phil Royal. And, uh, that's the first time I've heard in a public meeting him being referred to as Sheriff Phil Royal. And that is what Sheriff Dossie, even that, um, split sheriff hold himself, that was pretty neat. You know, school's just around the corner, um, teachers are going to be, um, starting back on the first, right? And students on the tenth, and we have our new stu-, new teacher orientation. So there's a lot of things going on. And, um, I think the community really does a lot of great things for our kids, right? Stuff to bus, the churches, there are even welcome back programs for teachers and all those things. And that's really a great thing, uh, for this community that we see going forward, because we do serve, um, uh, some of the privileged number of students that don't have it quite as good. And, uh, it's important that we remember that. So I'm excited about a new school year and looking forward to, uh, the, the things that are ahead. And hopefully, uh, as we talk to the community, as, as we talk to people, I know we all have been, that we talk about our needs and we talk about the, uh, you know, the benefits of having capital funding for our schools. And I really, uh, just want to encourage all of our, all of the staff, all the employees, that it's important for them too to talk about this, to talk about the needs in the district and what we're doing for kids. Because that's the way, um, you know, we can make the most for our schools and, uh, bring about, um, that opportunity for us to have the revenue. If we don't have the revenue, we got to realize that people have to realize there's going to be cuts. And I hope that, um, we don't have to make those cuts, but this board, I think, will do what needs to be done. And there will not be happy people in this community because of it. Uh, so it's a very serious time for us to look at the needs of the district and what we want to do for kids going forward. And I am happy to say that a lot of the people that I speak to, uh, who, who are retirees and when I explain to them, um, the facts, when I explain to them what we're dealing with, they, they are for helping kids, the next generation. And, um, you know, so I'm encouraged of that. And, uh, I, you know, I didn't know Mr. Lloyd was coming, we all know he gets around with some of the meetings, but he made a very good comment, you know, well, let's not, uh, let's, let's win this thing, let's go out and let's work, uh, work and inform people so that we can do what's right and what's the best thing for our students.
Thanks very much. And I want to give a thank to, uh, Mr. I've also heard of the WYKE talking about the asset tax and explaining to everyone. Very important for them, Mr. Kennedy, you and I both, I mean, we've talked about, we, we have a table set up. I did not have a single person who was against the asset tax. It's, they were very positive. And in fact, one person has started talking, giving sugars and materials to range, don't need to give somebody else, I voted for you. So it was really good to hear that. And this morning, I, uh, with you was jam line, which should be on sometime today.
Excellent.
The Bay was there?
Yes, Bay was there, right, about the same thing you talked with WYKE, about the asset tax.
Excellent. They were here at the district office?
Yes, yes, I came to the district office. And Mrs. Smith will also talk to them.
Okay, very good.
We need to get that on, on replay as well.
Yes, we always have to depend on you.
We'll make sure it takes place.
Mr. Dodd, he said it's ours, the, uh, you know, they're very, people are very, very positive. And, uh, we even, folks, the weekends, up in Jackson, we were with the girls I've talked about, with my graduating class in high school, we meet once a month, and they rang us and we thought, well, look, y'all have to come down to Citrus County, what's happening next? I told them I've had sense. And my friend says, from St. John's County, they're like, say, you know, y'all should, that should be voted in, no problem. She said, but that's important. And St. John's County, we know, uh, uh, Welby County, but also that's in support, and they truly support education. And my friend from there said, hey, y'all should go right ahead with, make it happen. So I was very pleased, I had Welby very positive. It's all I have, Mr. Hamel. Yes, Mike, there. He always reminds me of a time I. Thank you. Yes. I close this special meeting Citrus County School Board. Thank you very much. And, uh, we're going to open up a public hearing, five thirty. And it's on the tentative budget. So I'll call the meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the tentative mileage rate and the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen fiscal year. This is an advertised public hearing. Public basis of this hearing appeared in the Citrus County Chronicle on July the twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. The tentative mileage rate required local effort is four point six, seven, seven, zero mils, which includes point zero, three, four, zero bills to require period adjustment and is a decrease of three point one three percentage from the rollback rate. The tentative mileage rate for the discretionary is two point two, four, eight, zero mils, which includes capital outlet. The total tentative mileage rate is six point nine, two, five, zero mils and is a decrease of one point four, two percent from the rollback rate. The tentative budget totals two hundred and eight million, three hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as to the mileage levy or any item within the budget?
I would like to.
Luke Falcone, Mr. Merrick, please, come to the podium.
Just a question for the record. This does not include any of the proposed, uh, sales tax, is that correct?
Correct. It's correct.
For the record, thank you. For the record, thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Merrick, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.6770 mills, which includes .0340 mills for prior period adjustment for operating purposes?
I move to adopt tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.6770 mills for operating purposes.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. And Mr. Kennedy seconded the motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.6770 mills for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 3-0. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of .7480 mills for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of .7480 mills for operating purposes.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy and seconded by Mr. Dodd to adopt the tentative local discretionary millage rate of .7480 mills for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay. Ayes have it, passes 3-0. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.5000 mills for capital outlay purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.5000 mills for capital outlay purposes.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.5000 mills for capital outlay purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. These mills rates, millage rates, represent a total millage rate of 6.9250 mills. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate?
I move to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to adopt, to, excuse me, to approve the motion, the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2016-2017, whereas the School Board of Citrus County forwarded it pursuant to chapters 201, 11 Florida statutes approved tentative millage rates for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, and whereas at the public hearing in the court compliance for chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates in the amounts of required local effort tentative millage levy of 4.677, proposed amount to be raised $40,741,612. Basic discretionary tentative millage levy, 0.7480, proposed amount to be raised, $6,515,870. Capital outlay tentative millage levy, 1.5000, proposed amount to be raised, $13,66,585. Total millage rate to be levied is less than the rollback rate by 1.42 percent, now therefore being resolved with the School Board of Citrus County adopting each tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, on July 26, 2016, by separate prior to adopting the tentative budget.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The motion, opposed, carries 3-0. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2016-17 fiscal year in the amount of 208,304,590?
I move to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2016-2017 fiscal year in the amount of 208,304,590.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2016-17 fiscal year in the amount of 208,304,590. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries 3-0. Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2016-17 fiscal year?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2016-2017 fiscal year.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd, to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2016-2017 fiscal year.
Resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2016-2017, whereas the School Board of Citrus County forwarded it pursuant to chapters 201, 11 Florida statutes approved the tentative millage rates and tentative budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, and whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2016-2017, and whereas at the public hearing in the court compliance for chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates and the budget in the amount of 208,304,590 for fiscal year 2016-2017, now therefore being resolved that the budget, excuse me, that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County included the millage rates as set forth therein is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as the tentative budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries 3-0, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted?
I move to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries 3-0. A final budget hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, September 13, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. at the Citrus County School Board District Services Center located at 1,007 West Main Street on State Road 44 in Memphis, Florida. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Do you want to, right before we go into the workshop, you ready? Okay. Now we begin the workshop, and we'll begin with Hamel. Thank you. Again, thanks, CSE.
I am here with a quarterly update of our health insurance fund. So if you look at the first page, I followed the same format as I did three months ago, and so what I'm doing is I'm looking at the last quarter compared to this current quarter that we've just completed. So I, and when I say quarter one, I'm basing that on a calendar year because that is our health insurance year. So I'm going to be comparing what calendar year quarter one, which was January, February, March, to the next page, which was quarter two of the calendar year, which would be April, May, and June. That's our most recent quarter. So if you look first at the quarter one, and I'm just capturing what happened in one month's time in each of these columns. So in January, you'll see the total revenue, the total expense, so that is claims plus wellness center expenses plus any other fees that we have. It's total expense, and it shows what the difference would be during that one month period of time. So you'll see that for January, February, and March, and it obviously fluctuates because the claims have a big fluctuation. So if you would look at our, the quarter that we just completed, which is the next slide, which would be quarter two of the calendar year, if you look at April, May, and June, so again, you have the revenue, the total expense, you'll see that we had very high claims the month of April. The claims the month of April were 1.269, so that's what makes that total expense so much higher than what you saw on the previous pages, and then the difference for that one month that we captured in time was the negative. And then in May, you'll see claims were 849,000, so the expense, the total expense was down, obviously. And then in June, now, June is skewed somewhat if you look at the revenue, because in June, you know that many of our employees, for the months of May and June, many of our employees get two checks, and so it's increasing the board match and the premiums that are being pulled from those checks, and that's why that is skewed as far as the revenue. So then keep in mind, for the months of July and August, we're going to have lower revenue than we normally would have. So again, I'm just capturing a month at a time here. So then what I also did was I took those total of six months and took those differences in all six columns, and where would we stand? And we would stand at 200,000 to the good, but again, it skewed somewhat because premiums were higher in the month of June. Mr. Bishop, if you have any comments, of course, that'd be fine. Okay, all right. So if you look at the claims data, the next slide for the next page, that's the total claims, just showing you year 14, year 15, and year 16. If I could just point out that fiscal year 14, 15, we only had two months during that fiscal year where we hit a million or more. If you'll remember, when I came to you a year ago and we had seen a really high month, we said, you know, we hope that's an anomaly, we hope that's not going to be the norm. But then you'll see for fiscal year 15, 16, we've had five months where we've been over a million, with a really high month there, 1.4. We've got 1.3 almost in the month of April. So unfortunately, it's not an anomaly, it's becoming more of the norm. We're going to have to plan for that. We're going through the renewal process right now as far as premiums or possible plan changes. So I could ask you to look at the next page. This is showing you the fiscal year monthly average. Again, it's kind of what I just alluded to, as far, it was not an anomaly, it seems to be more of the norm. The monthly average for fiscal year 14, 15, we were averaging 863,000 a month for those 12 months. But our most recent 12 months, which is fiscal year 15, 16, we're averaging 1 million Any thoughts or questions in that regard before I move to the next page?
Have you broken down, spoken about, and why, or what category agrees to more medicine?
Pharmacy is still up. We also have a few climates with some very high dollar things going on, so.
Illness is a high number.
Absolutely, yes. That is, that is a key factor right now.
But our fiscal year monthly revenues have all been over a million dollars.
But remember, our expenses are not just claims, they're also running the wellness center, our reinsurance fees, our Lord Blue fees.
These are just the claims data that does not include our fees or our lawsuit.
Well, depends on which one you're looking at, if you don't mind.
Page five.
Hey.
Fiscal year monthly average has been a million and four dollars.
That is claims alone.
Claims alone.
And then page four, that is claims alone, but pages two and three, where I'm showing you total expenses, that's claims plus everything. That's why that number's higher.
You know, what I'd like to, we'll go back to Ms. Powers' question as far as the area. As Mrs. Surratt said, the pharmaceuticals, we have seen a drastic increase in our cost for pharmaceuticals. In talking with our partners at Crown, he shared with us that we have actually dispensed many thousands of prescriptions less than we have in years past, yet our expenses as far exceeded, or exceeded or outpaced years past. I believe if I, I'm going by my numbers here, going by memory, if I'm mistaken, things like 19,000 less prescriptions, and yet our amount of money we spend for prescriptions has far exceeded what we paid for those previous 19,000. I think we went from 30, 39,000 to 20,000 prescriptions being this, hitting our plan, and yet we spent more money for those 20,000 prescriptions than we did for the 39,000 prescriptions.
I was reading, I guess, a newspaper about prescription costs, I remember one, you were supposed to take about something, it's a thousand dollars a pill, you take one a day, so that's now 30,000 dollars a month, and I actually knew someone who was on the gene one that acted as sure by the city board, and they have one of the best ones ever in the past, and they paid her 25,000 dollars a month for the same drug. But if someone, so came into the system and they were taking a thousand dollar pill a day, would that be one that would be available upon, or no?
The, our formulary only includes generic medications. Most often those high, high expense medications like you're referencing, they're not available in pharmaceuticals in a generic form because the pharmaceutical companies have, they started to patent on those, so therefore, they're not available, unfortunately. I can share with you, although we don't have names because the people have yet, I can share with you that we do have claimants that receive medications that exceed 30,000 dollars a month.
And my question would be in whether it's medication or, well, first, the first question is, is the challenge, I would think, is, oh, the medication we know is, it's not unique to just Citrus County school system, we know that's a, that's a national issue that we're facing. Is there not still, though, the hope and theory that the more people we continue to get and encourage to utilize, that continues, though, to have a recurring positive benefit on what large expenses we might have, medical expenses that we could incur? So the difficulty is, is if we try to tinker with that in the policy too much, we potentially hurt ourselves when it comes to now having to maybe take care of medical expenses that we could have avoided to ensure that those people have proper medication so that they aren't having those additional expenses. Is that generally?
That is correct, if I understood your question correctly.
I'm saying, I apologize the way I explained it.
If I understand your question, we try to encourage people to use the wellness centers for the HRA, their health risk assessment surveys, where we can actually, the physicians there can diagnose any kind of onset of any illness or condition, so we can be proactive to prevent them from escalating to a point to where they're needing those high, high cost medications. However, we do have claimants that they need those high cost medications, but yes, if we can get people into the wellness center using the HRA, at the wellness centers for the HRAs, by all means, that is a cost savings. The more people we can get using the wellness center, there is a direct cost savings to our health insurance plan, absolutely.
And also then goes into, while we do, again, without Hitler violations, and we're talking about generically, when we do have situations that, whether they're catastrophic, whether they're just high expenses, have we looked into what we could do to maybe either take them off our self-insurance and look at some other alternative way of maybe reinsuring that type of situation? And I don't, I don't apologize, I don't know enough of that.
No, actually, that's a great question. We do have reinsurance that we do purchase through our self-insurance plan, we do protect ourselves through reinsurance, and some of the things we're looking at doing through this renewal process is to work with Sumitra, which is our provider of reinsurance, to see if we can change the limits of that reinsurance to help offset the rise in claim, the rise in premiums. Does that make any sense to you? So for example, if our current reinsurance is at 300,000 dollars for the whole pool, if we were to bump that maybe to some of our high claimants to be 500,000 dollars a month, would that offset or mitigate some of the increase in premiums? So we're very much in those discussions right now with our friends at Crown, and we're hoping to have another meeting, I believe it's next Monday afternoon, at 2:00, with our folks from Crown, to see what those numbers look like.
The other thing I know that we're, we're facing is educating the member, educating the staff member to understand, you know, how to mitigate and keep their costs low. We're, we're trying to do and manage as we can. This is not, again, unique to Citrus County, it's not unique to Florida, it's not unique, it's, it's a, it's a challenge that we have. What I know, though, is even within my own family, is by using the wellness center and raising my deductible limit, I still am significantly ahead of the game of what my out-of-pocket expense has been, because, heck, I found the other day, even my general physician that isn't part of the wellness center, he gives me my labs, I can take that to the wellness center, and I'm, I used to pay 150 dollars to have lab work done. I don't have. I don't have to pay that. Even when, if there are medications that are generic medications that I get from a different physician, the wellness center takes care of those costs. So I've actually found my out-of-pocket expense at the end of the year has been dramatically reduced. It just as I'm paying it differently than I used to. I may pay more in the premium, but less in my doctor's business.
Absolutely, and that calls to the need for education. I can tell you, Ms. Sernich and Mr. Bower did a great job last spring going out, educating our staff how to maximize the use of the wellness center to, in essence, keep money in their pocket and yet still help serve the plan, if that makes any sense. Mr. Bower's scheduled to talk to all of our new hires tomorrow, all of our new teachers tomorrow, at new teacher orientation, about maximizing the wellness center and what the benefit is for them personally, as well as for all the membership within our insurance.
And HSA, I've got to do a commercial for HSA. That has been a huge savings to our family.
Absolutely.
Of setting up an HSA account. Our credit union works right with them. They can set it up and get a debit card for it, go to the doctors, or frankly, dentists, orthodontists, you know, vision, anything, and save substantially off of their costing that.
Absolutely. One of the things we can do to mitigate some of the cost associated with our health insurance is to maximize our wellness center, like I said. And I know Ms. Sernich has a slide here, she's going to discuss with you regarding the no-shows. We're seeing a positive trend in the decline of the number of no-shows, but there is a direct cost associated with no-shows appointments. We have doctors sitting there, we have providers sitting there that when someone doesn't show up, we're actually paying their salary for them to do nothing while they're there. So we have some plans to go before our insurance committee to share with them our thoughts as far as the no-shows. We're pretty confident our insurance committee is going to be very supportive of implementing some sort of program to help deter those folks from not showing up for those appointments. I just reassure you, Ms. Sernich and Mr. Bower collectively are being very active in managing the health insurance fund. The purpose today is to share with you some information as to where we currently are. And we will bring back every quarter information as far as our financial status, our financial position of the health insurance fund.
What, there's an advertisement on television, do you remember what it's about? That talks about screenings where these, I guess, bogeys come to each town with a screening for like five different things and they list them all. And those are things that always go to the doctor and get screened. But every time I see the advertisement, oh, they're screened again. Don't need to be screened, but it's such an effective advertisement. So maybe something like that. What it does is give people knowledge of what's going to happen to them instead of saying, go get screened, you know, inside, you know. But specifically, they say something and make it look like a fun experience.
Thank you. It looks like, I took the 2015 January through June and 2016 January through June. It seems to be it's about a little more than, a little less than $600,000 difference. We'll call it a little, you know, about 10%, a little more than 10% increase. We have, I know you've got it down, you show your monthly average.
Talking about total claims on page...
The total, yeah, because of course I can only go total claims to 2016.
But you'll see on the bottom of page four, you've got your total for 2014 is 10.1. Your total for 2015 is 11.4.
Right, and I'm saying through 16 already, though, it's about 10% above that already. So it looked, and I know it's not even, we can't even begin to question, you know, know what the summertime's going to look like. Because people tend to do a lot during the summer, take that opportunity. And I think that's what we found in July of last year, people went to the doctor.
Right, yes.
So if we're talking at 10%, which is similar to what it was in the year before, increase, I mean, that's some of what we, I think this board has to just keep, you're trying to tell us, we need to keep monitoring that.
Yes. Right, are we ready for page six? The no-shows, we're just, if you remember, we did with the education, we talked about the no-shows with everyone. We explained to them how that had an effect on our plan. Steve did a really good job of doing that. And you'll see from February forward, there's been somewhat of a decline, but we still have too many, it's still costing our plan. So as Mr. Bishop mentioned, we are looking towards implementing that no-show fee that we've been talking about implementing. They must have heard us talking though, because last week Steve said we only had six no-shows. So they must know we're on the verge of implementing a no-show fee. But it's still too, it is still too much. We've talked about $25. First one would be a bit of a warning, and then second, 25, third, 25, fourth, 25.
Would it be a salary deduction, or I mean payroll deduction?
It could be, some districts are doing a payroll deduction.
I mean, because I'm thinking if we're going to go collective, I'm sure that could become challenging and problematic.
Yeah, and that concept is, and it's definitely, I know we have an insurance committee meeting that leaves at the end of August or beginning of September. We really want that decision to be driven by the committee as we have a representative from every call center in the school district on that committee, that committee's 40-some people strong. So we really want that to be driven by them. But we're thinking that somewhere around, it seems to be customary, it's around $25. Some of the districts are $25, that's why Ms. Sernich shared it today.
Can I just say that one of the things that you have to look at is what the definition of a no-show is? You know, because if we're five minutes late, they shouldn't be a no-show. And I don't think that's the case right now. So I think that's something that would have to be, you would have to make sure that you define what a no-show is.
Okay. All right.
Absolutely, it's something about a car accident. I remember somebody actually had a car accident.
Are they going to work with people like that, is that correct?
They have their own tab on a car accident.
That's probably true.
That would be a warning. But that's true, that could be...
And the committee would, again, that would be all those things that I think the committee would first do and then we, and I agree with Mr. Bower, that would need to be part of that.
We do get a report regularly of who the no-shows are. And we have a process in place where we're calling and we're sending a letter and we're reminding, but it tends to be the same folks over and over that are repeat offenders, much like our discipline. Okay, page seven. We're right in the middle of the renewal process right now and open enrollment is right around the corner. This is a bit of a timeline. We are having our meetings with Crown, as Mr. Bishop mentioned. August 23rd, I hope to bring information to you in a workshop. September 13th, I plan to seek board approval. October 13th, we will be sending the initial email out to all staff with instructions. Then September 19 through October 14th, Mr. Bower and I will be going to all sites and explaining to them what the premium increases are, et cetera. And then October 17 through 21, that week is online open enrollment. Then the next two weeks, combined benefits group, they will have their team here from Texas to assist us and they will be going out to all sites for face-to-face appointments for any employee who wants that. And then November 7 through 10, that's the final week of the online open enrollment to get everybody finished up. Then on page eight, this is about our Florida, our contract with Florida Blue, just to kind of keep you updated on that. Our current Florida Blue contract is in effect through December of 2017. A timeline as far as renewing that contract or seeing what we're going to do, what direction we're going to be heading. March and April of 2017, we're going to meet with Florida Blue to discuss 2018 renewal options with them. Then we're going to meet with Crown to discuss self-insured versus fully insured. What other, what's happening out there in the insurance world? What do the companies have things, what are they able to offer? How does that compare to what we have currently with Florida Blue? And then in April of 2017, the district and Crown together will evaluate all of this information that we have gathered and see where we need to go from there.
So one of the things that we don't see is a projection on the self-insurance fund, looking ahead with that. So what are the numbers on self-insurance? What were your thoughts on that?
You know, that's something I've been...
We put 800,000 in this last time?
Say that again.
Did we put 800,000 in? So what are we looking, what's the projection?
Tammy and I have had these conversations, Mr. Bishop and I have had these conversations. That is something that, you see how the claims fluctuate, it's very hard to predict something like that. I can tell you, within the last six months, we're 200,000 up, but we had June really high revenue. It's hard to stand here and predict that, I don't know if... I think you can see our budget was based on averaging, we were averaging 860,000 in claims, but we truly averaged a million in claims. So...
Certainly can understand the concern with the $800,000 that we had to transfer over. That's part of our thought process as we're going through this renewal process. As I shared earlier, we meet on Monday, Monday afternoon. When we go through the renewal process and the increase in premiums, we have to build in there a plan for establishing a reserve fund because essentially, that's what the board did for the health insurance fund with the $800,000 was to supplement the reserves. So we have to calculate in our renewal fees, we have to calculate a certain amount of money to go toward the reserves. It's way too early to tell right now. The reason why it's too early to tell is because, as I shared with you, we don't have the numbers back from Symmetra as far as the reinsurance and how we're going to try to do some plan modifications. We're hoping to get those Monday from Crown. Once we get those numbers, we'll have a much better idea as to what we're probably looking at. And as soon as we have that information, we'll gladly bring it to the board. We have a problem doing that, it's just a little early to tell right now.
How many members are enrolled in insurance plans? Our self-insurance, but how many members?
How many plans or how many belly buttons?
How many members?
Members, okay.
We have approximately 1,740 plans covering approximately 2,680 belly buttons. People.
The first was 1,740, is that it?
Yep. If you recall, when we did the 800,000, we had thought there may be the need for the 1.6 million double for reserves. So if you recall, we had to put the 800,000 into the self-insurance fund, but we are still keeping restricted the other 800,000 as a plan. I think, oops. That's okay. I think it is likely, you know, that we'll need that 800,000 that's restricted right now. Will we need more? I hope not, but it is, it's just early. And I know this doesn't make it any better, but I told you about the districts where way more than that they have had to use because, like you said, this is not, and it doesn't make it any better, it's not the way we want it to be. And that's why we're going to plan in premiums to hopefully start paying our bills and building a reserve. So...
Well, the thing too, that we hate to have to increase premiums, but we have to keep the, you know, if we've got to pay our bills, we've got to be soft, you know. The other thing, though, is that, you know, we have this contract through December 31st, 2017 with Blue Cross. The other thing I think people need to know, especially on your committee, and they probably do, is that, you know, this has got to be open for competition. Look at other companies that we may be able to get in. I know Blue Cross has got a good product and, you know, but if they don't want to come to the table and sharpen the pencil, then we've got to look at other options. And we have to look at that in the name of savings and providing a insurance coverage that is the best, most bang for the buck. And I know it's early because we're talking about not until January of 2018, but I don't think there's any problem with mentioning that to people so they'll know, you know, we may, there's no guarantees that we'll stay with Blue Cross. And there's no guarantees that your premiums won't go up. The board is working hard to keep costs down and premiums, or premiums down, but, you know, that's something to communicate.
Yes, sir, and that's a very valid point. I can assure you that in our last meeting with our friends from Crown, I was very clear with them, the expectation of them bringing back a very sharp pencil and a number, a very sharp pencil from Blue Cross as is my goal, as is Ms. Sernich's goal, as is Super Tennis's goal, is to provide the best product for our employees with the highest level of care at the most economically beneficial way we can do that. I know Mr. Bower is very aware of that position that we take here in Citrus County. But yes, we will have those conversations and we're going to exhaust all options before any decisions made, I think I'm mistaken about it. But if you don't mind, don't want to go long here this evening, but I do want, I think it's important to share. When we go through this renewal process and we build in, in our premium increase, we build in monies to go toward the reserve, those new fees really don't go into effect until, what, January 1? The reality is, we have to be actuarially sound and we have to turn in our financials at the end of December 30th, at the end of December, actually, it's the 3rd of January, if I'm not mistaken, based on our December 30th numbers. We're not going to have those reserve numbers. So what I want to just caution the board and make the board aware of is that there is a very good chance, unless something miraculous happens with a tremendous decline in claims numbers between now and December, I do believe we're going to have to use that $800,000. And I'm holding my breath that we're not going to have to come back before the board and say, listen, the numbers came in and we need this additional money. I mean, that's a very real possibility if those claims numbers don't decrease significantly. And we're concerned about that. But I don't want, I didn't want to wait until January to come to you and tell you that. I'd rather you now know that now so we can start preparing for that.
Those claim numbers, if, and I know we put the 800 and we put in another 800 in the reserves. And let's for the moment say, okay, if those get used. But we then, it's kind of doubled that every time, is it not? Because you also have to question whether you will need that in a subsequent year. And you have to go back and capture for what you had to advance. So 16 can become, you know, 32 for us because you also have got to then pay back, do we not, what we had to advance?
You mean pay back to the general fund?
To the general fund. We're just going to, we just expensed that.
You have to expense that, we cannot do that actually. We're hopeful that it doesn't get to 3.2. Yeah, but that is, Ms. Sernich shared by statute, we can't, we can't pay that.
You can't pay it back on that. But you do have to make sure that you then plan for it in the subsequent year.
Absolutely, you have to have the equivalent.
So, and so as we're doing that and we know, not only do we have to match what it was for the privileges, you still have to guesstimate them. And I know that they require us to put in addition to what we used to make sure that we have a healthy fund balance. The other thing we've talked about is, we have, and I know it may not always seem it to our members, but am I correct to call them members as this? Some of these are rich plans, that they are. As opposed to, you know, that they're used to because for many years, they paid maybe a low deductible and it paid for everything. But that's really changed dramatically in the insurance world. There, you know, there is, you know, we're becoming, you know, in the structure we have, we have a wellness center to try and offset those costs and then try and use the insurance side of it as catastrophes, unplanned health expenses that take place. We of course want people to utilize and be healthy and get the medical treatments they need. But at the same time, we may have to look at offering different options, not just a different, but different products so that we can say, and I know you continue to do that over the years, but we do have some rich plans still.
Yes, sir, that is correct. And I think you have, we have, through this process, we have to be very cognizant that if we're going to see an increase in premiums of X, if we leave it at X, how many people are going to drop off? If we change the plan and we leave it at X, or if we save 2% and increase, but yet others drop off, we're hurting on our revenue side. So it's really a balancing act between the revenue side and the claim side. So what our plan is to do is this. Our plan is to look at claim modifications. Our thought is to also look at where we can change what we're currently doing with the least impact on the negative side to help on the positive side. It's going to be a balancing act. But we will be prepared to share with the board, if we go fully insured, this is what it's going to cost. If here's our plans, if we change our plans, this is what, the percentage we would save. But also understand, the more that we save on one side, it could hurt us on the other. So we've got to look at that as a balance sheet, we've got to figure out what we need to do. And I can tell you, Sherry and I have spent a lot of time having those conversations.
Was it the times of increased people that went to the center? Is it because it's like a fly-by-the-people, or is there some reason for it? Is it just June's here and they go more June? Or it's not because of some illness or something?
Yes, they're off work, they're trying to get, we see an increase in the summertime and an increase at Christmas holiday, right?
It's not illness-related type of thing?
No, ma'am, it's just a...
But they may have had something that they've been waiting on until...
Other things people will put off to the summer, so...
And we are grateful when they do that, and it's hard on them.
Absolutely.
But if they put up too long, it's going to cost more to...
It can, that's right, no, that's... Thank you, Ms. Sernich, I know this is a lot.
We have the budget update next.
I was hoping to go over this before the budget's turning. I was hoping to go over this before the budget opening. You've got your budget books. And a lot of this information here, you've seen over and over the last few months. The last few pages are what was in the paper this past Saturday. And a lot of the questions that we've been faced with lately and with the public is about the millage rates. And so I put together a little presentation to kind of explain how millage rates and TRIM work. So I'd like to educate you as well as the public on this a little bit right now. So, you guys see this? Okay. What is millage? That actually came from the property appraiser's office with that little picture, so...
That'll do.
The property appraiser does not set the tax rate. The tax rate is set by the various taxing authorities throughout Citrus County. The Citrus County School District does not set the required local effort. It is set by the Florida Department of Education. Okay, 1 mil is equivalent to a dollar in taxes due per $1,000 of taxable value. So in this scenario, a $200,000 assessed value home, the millage rate was 16.4511. And they have all the calculations in here. The taxes due would be $3,290.22 a year. So we have to go through truth in millage, which is called TRIM, which is part of the process we did today with the whole resolutions and adopting the millages and everything. It's the public's process that invites the public to participate in the local process of levying the lower own taxes. This is their chance to get in here and speak, mostly to the county commissioners and the other ones that have the right to change their millage. You know, sometimes we do get people in here who want to talk to us about our millage, but we don't, can't really do anything about it.
Did it help you, the investors from outside?
Because in some states, they visit, they can send it locally.
Okay, so the formants in the back of your book is called the DR420. And what that is, it's to determine the rollback rate and its relationship to the proposed millage rate. The property appraiser completes the first part and we complete the second part. Rollback rate defined. The rollback rate is defined as the millage rate, which provides the same property tax revenue for each taxing authority as was levied during the previous year, exclusive of new construction additions, rehabilitative improvements, increasing assessed value by at least 100% annexations and deletions. So what does that really mean? The rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenues as approved for the prior year. So basically, what millage rate would we have to levy this year so that the property owners would pay the same amount of taxes this year? When the tax base increases, the rollback rate is less because if the taxes are higher, we have to levy less millage to get the same amount of money. So when the tax base is decreased, the rollback rate is more. Okay, section one is completed by the property appraiser. The first piece is the taxable value of the real property for operating purposes. That's pretty self-explanatory. The second is the personal property. That's businesses, bulldozers and equipment and computers and things like that that they are taxed on. The next piece is the taxable value of centrally assessed property for operating purposes. Centrally assessed properties are the ones that are owned or leased by public service entities, just so you're aware of that. Okay, so your gross taxable value for your operating purposes, which is the one we base our millage on this year,
Period.
Period. The new taxable value, we take off the new construction that we've had this year. So the current year's adjusted taxable value is $9,414,791. Right, this is the part that we complete. We take the prior year taxable value and we calculate out our millage rates that we had. So prior year total state law and local board proceeds would be $63,251,544. So the rollback rate to receive that same amount of money would be 4.8281 per thousand and 2.1966 per thousand for the local discretionary millage. So then we take our current gross taxable value and we multiply out by what we actually are levying. And as you can see, we are receiving $62,837,570. This is 3.13% less than the rollback rate. So we're receiving 3.13% less than what we received last year, even though property rates have gone up values.
One more time. Just that one section, just...
We're receiving 3.13% less than last year based on if we levy the millage to get the same amount of money. We're receiving 3.13% less. Okay, what does all of this mean? Right, so there's a chart on here to show you, basically to break this out, to show you that the final taxable value last year was the $63.25 million. Then we plug in our current taxable value with the rollback rate and it comes out to $63.25 million. Then we take the taxable value and plug in what we're actually levying and it's $62.84 million. Are there any questions so far?
And that's the total taxes collected at the bottom there. The total taxes is the total local amount of taxes collected.
Levied.
Levied, I should say, not collected, levied.
Yes, the amount we levied.
And so as you can see, from the prior years, it's down.
Right.
And so even though property values increased from the school taxable value from, call it 8.8 million to nine, a little more, a little over 9 million, we have lost money.
Yes, sir.
Or let me say, there is a lesser amount that is being levied locally.
Yes, sir. And this is cumulative, this is everything. This is our required local effort, our discretionary and our capital. Here are the facts. This decreases our required local effort by $1,033,587 from the rollback rate. It increases our local discretionary by $206,257.
Because we had a slight increase in the school taxable value. So those would go up.
Yes, sir. And we had an increase in our capital outlay of $413,695.
So the one point though to make here, that if we are asked a specific question on the capital side, because the property values have gone up, the 1.5 mils has meant additional revenue.
Yes, sir, by $413,000. $414,000, yes.
But if we look at the big picture of the, if you put all these funds together, that's where we come back to the loss.
A total loss of 413 points, yeah, 413.
And if it increased again next year by the same amount and even compounding, we would be no... We would be just probably barely keeping up with our most minimal expenses because we're not. For example, we're talking about, hopefully with the referendum, about a 6 to 6.5 million dollar advantage to the school district. In this case, we're talking about a $413,000 difference.
Correct. And for the taxpayer, for the property owner, this means that for school taxes, they're actually paying less school taxes this year than they were last year, if you're a property owner.
Unless their appraised value went up significantly, right? Unless they weren't in a cap situation.
Well, if they, if part of it is you have to save your homes, that kicks into place. So you have 3% and, which again, people think, well, you could go, and even if tomorrow, next year went up 10% of the values, we're not going to get a realization though of that increase in tax... I mean, in those values because of the save your homes. It would take a number of years for it to catch up to that.
Unless they want residence.
Unless they... That would be, that's a good point. If they didn't have a homestead, then they would... But a homestead protection is going to protect that. And I think generally, that's who's the most vocal, our homestead property.
So I just wanted to kind of give a little education on the rollback rate because we talked, you must have said rollback rate a dozen times today and not a lot of people really understand what that means.
Could you, and I know I asked this, but do you mind sending that out to us, this presentation? Because I think it's a good presentation.
Oh, Kami, Mr. Walker.
Just so you understand, if you go back a few slides, you'll be able to... So if you see the current proposed state law rate, the state rollback rate, it's negative 3.13%. That's the required local effort, that was the loss in May and the table you showed you. And then when you add them both together, you have some gains within the total net.
Still a one point. Oh, well, it's half negative.
Right, in total for all of them. The RLE is a negative. It's just in case someone asks you.
While you're up here, and I'm really going to direct it at both of you and I, and please don't, I know this is almost going to sound humorous, but I'm going to ask you. But I think, given some of the things that have been said recently, either Ms. Wilson in preparing this or Mr. Walker in your subsequent years in doing this, has a superintendent or the school board ever asked or have you ever prepared a second set of books in order to mask any misinformation or to mislead the public?
And Mr. Kami, is that something...
Sadly, I'm asking, I know the answer, but I'm saying I think that people do believe this and I really want it to be clear.
And the answer is no. Cannot find the time in the month to prepare a second set at all.
You know, every year, knowing you took y'all, actually, because of the DOE. So DOE gets a big essential approval, but it goes in your system and makes you a grant. On top of that, just put the AFR the other year, which is a recap of your total financials, which doubles on top of the audit. So if people are saying that and they're saying there's some unethical auditor job there, well, we know that they're here probably nine months out of the year looking for our books or operations.
We finish one and we begin another audit.
It's really a shame if people say that.
And I've tried to explain and I think that either the media that ask almost apologetically, ask those types of things. But the reality, I've tried to explain to the public is, this wouldn't be just a local issue as you just described. It would have to be multiple levels of government through the state and federal in order to mislead the public, whether that's our budget or whether that's even the idea that our graduation rate was modified. It wouldn't require a concert of people working in order to deceive. And frankly, we are not that interested.
Their audit, they'll audit the other year. That's a complete financial and operational audit. So they go through everything. And then we also do the A133, which is the federal.
We can get all those together, operate on things that we want to do. Someone's not going to get them.
It's embarrassing to have to ask that of our staff. And I know the answer, but I appreciate, so that we put it in the end. It's interesting and I believe this is the case, I was looking through, you know, there's been a lot of conversation of, when we talk about what we were in 2008 to today. What's interesting is, and Ms. Wilson, I appreciate you giving us figures that go back to 2000. But our millage rate was interestingly much higher in those earlier years than they are today.
Yes, if you look on page 10 of the budget book, and this will be posted on the district website tomorrow, the tentative, and this is the tentative budget. This is, you know, what we're starting the year off with. But if you look at page 10, this is a new graph I did add. The red line is the millage. And if you look in, from 6.7, it went up to a high in 10.11. And then we took some big drastic hits. And some of that, this is total millage. This included from the 2.0 down to the 1.5. And some of the higher years is when we were levying the 0.25 critical outlay. But yet, we still aren't getting 2.0 then. The 0.25 only brought us up to 1.75. So the state is still cut and cut and cut.
And I talk about, even when we're talking about in the early 2000s, 1990s, we're not even talking about the same educational system. We did not have the mandates, we did not have classroom size amendment, we did not have technology mandates, we did not have a testing mandate that was anywhere close to what we have today, nor the tracking of all of those students and the data required with them. All of those have increased the cost of education and been bared by the local school district to figure it out. Because certainly, they haven't made those decisions and sent money with those decisions and mandates. So when we talk about people say, "Well, live within your means", we do every year. What we've had to do is cut every year in order to stay within those means to the tone of millions and millions and millions of dollars. I don't recall being on this board as a board member since I've been here that every year, we have had to make large cuts. And I appreciate that this district, this board and our superintendent has made it clear, we will continue to do what we have to do to live within that budget, but minimize the impact on our classrooms. That gets harder and harder every year. And as Mr. Don mentioned, it may become the most hard if this does not pass.
Would you go back one more time? So the overall was only a reduction of 1.42%? Is that what it was, if we look at the overall or is it the 3.?
That's the overall, that's...
Yeah, I want to see that one more time because I want to make sure I got my numbers right in my head. So if I look at overall with all the funds, we went down 1.42.
1.42.
Okay. Okay, okay. The rollback rate as a percent change was negative 3, dropped 3.13%.
That's the state.
Right, I got it.
State.
Yeah, required... So even though we saw a rise in the 1.5 mils as applied to taxable values, we saw overall a reduction of 1.42% in the total...
Correct. So this slide here, it tells you the increase over the rollback rate of the capital outlay and the local discretionary. But it's eaten up by that big decrease in the required effort. So I do want to remind you, this is the tentative budget. We have not, when we bring in the final budget, the carryovers and things like that will be budgeted in there. So that's in there.
But has he certified the appraisers? When's, I forget when the certify?
It is done.
It's done, yes, it was July 1st.
So that number is the final, or that would be the final certified for the TRIMs.
Yes, and then we have to certify to them what our millage is. You voted on it now, so now we can send it to them that this has been certified by our board. Any more questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Want to know those figures come about, what is the formant? Let's get the, I'll ask you one at a time. Okay, we're in the journal, so if there's nothing else, please bring it up. Okay, then we're in the journal. Thank you. Great report, Andy, thank you.